Yes.
All right, I want to motion to reconvene the meeting. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion back in session. Um, item is a discussion D, discussion capital improvements plan 2021, 2025. Christina.
Christina.
When you say sixty minutes, is that sixty minutes for each?
Hey, whoever put my clips on here, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Was that you Barbie?
Yep.
It was me.
Okay, so, let's see. If you want to turn to your agenda packets and the beyond the memo, I want to make one correction.
On the letter?
No. Beyond it, right there, yeah. So, the third one down, it says park toddler playground.
It should just be.
Take out the word toddler. Everything else remains the same. So, this is, this was developed in conjunction with the conversations we had at the budget retreat. So, just wanted to go over everything, make sure that next year's plans were exactly as you guys envisioned. We've got the park drainage, park upgrade drainage at ten thousand. It's a need that Derek had that we really need to get addressed.
Pass this around carefully.
Parking expansion, y'all had inquired about getting in the overlay map so you could kind of see where the proposed areas were going to be and Rohit's taken. This is just kind of a conceptual pencil draw.
Derek drew this.
Okay.
We worked together.
This is where?
This is going to be the park. This is just the park and if you, you can unfold this drawing to see where, to get a better idea of where these concept ideas are going in the park.
And Derek did this?
Yeah.
And he's, he's very familiar with the topographical. If we can do what we're suggesting to do, it's not over any kind of.
I can't speak for him.
Well, I'm sure he's an expert. If he's putting a parking lot over top of a leach field or anything, because that's a something, isn't it?
This is the Lakeside Corridor.
Aren't we on something there?
Yeah.
Okay. And if we're going to build more restrooms and stuff, that's the only thing that, you know. I'm just saying, does he have that expertise to be just, or is this just? All right, this guy would like to see.
That's a question for him.
It still has to go to an engineer's center.
Right, of course, of course. It's just that the last meeting, there was direction given to say, okay, you know, I can't visualize this. Where's the room? You know, this is, this shows where the room is to build the things that are in the CIP.
And this is not to scale, not exact, it's just kind of what we envisioned.
Yeah.
And it may change, but this is kind of his foresight and what he, how he thinks it's going to happen. And then, so then, and also next year, we'll have roundabout hardscaping from one roundabout, which is the very first one down at the corner of Marvin School and Newtown. Community garden rebuild, which I haven't heard the discussion that Derek had about the need for that.
Grated what area?
Parking.
Picnic, that's a picnic.
Oh, picnic, oh, sorry.
And again, any kind of park or passive recreation could go on top of subjects.
Okay, so that's under that big tree right there, right? The graded picnic area? It looks like it's right next to the big tree, it's right, did they have the swing office?
Yeah.
Right, and these are conceptual, not all of these are now or.
Possibly graded playing field.
No.
Right.
The only thing, the only thing that we're really discussing for next year is the park expansion, which is the gravel, the gravel parking.
Yeah, and Christine, I'm sorry, you said the roundabout hardscaping, that was going to be both of them?
Just one.
The far one?
Yep.
And we're adding parking to existing parking, right?
Right.
Okay. So, the only reason we're adding parking is because we have an issue when we have events.
Yeah, we're at capacity pretty much every time we have a big event.
So, Christine, the, so we're only going to do something in this first roundabout?
This year, this upcoming year.
And there's no plans, there's no plans to do any septic or water to this, we're working off a well and, I mean, sewer line anywhere soon coming through.
That, that's still a discussion that Mary Seif is continuing to look at, whatever makes financial sense.
So.
So, one a year.
Where is the common graders, where's that? Because we always talked about a pavilion down by the water. Is that in here?
Yeah, the picnic shelter.
Picnic shelter, okay.
So, the, so have we fixed the drainage? Because we, because we approved having the drainage fixed.
Yeah, they are actually in contract, let me check with Mike on that. I don't think they've actually constructed the sub drainage yet.
Okay, because, because like, like now is like a great, not that we can plant now, so I guess we'll plant in the fall.
I know they were waiting on some weather to clear up, but I will ask you that question.
Okay, so that's, so that's another perfect example of follow-up stuff. Like, that needs to be on the new action list, so we can talk about that, like, when we get there. But that's a perfect example, too. Okay, do we need to, do we have money elsewhere if this, if we go over this million dollars?
We do not. And so, I do want to make note that we currently have roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand in capital right now. We don't actually have a million, so we would have to come up with another two hundred and fifty somewhere to pay for Village Hall if it came in at a million in addition.
We need to go on that. I, I, just, me personally, mortgage rates now are nothing.
What, mortgage rates?
They just came down, they just came down. And we get them even lower. I, I, I think there would be a discussion around how much, you know, even if, you know, if it's two fifty or even more than two fifty, because you're.
I'm fine with that, I was just asking the question.
Yeah.
I'm fine with looking at some financing options.
I'm just saying, you, you know, we need to consider how we divvy that up.
It's not a reason not to move forward, to, to have that as a consideration. We did it with E for Park and within five years, we had it paid off. So, we can do something like accelerated interest that, you know, is easily, it's just.
Okay, I was just asking the question.
So, we, I've got it in here, I'm actually not going to appropriate it in the budget. It's in a capital project, it makes no sense to do it. Just so y'all can see that it's there, that's where y'all wanted it. There is also some additional playground equipment needs that Derek has in here at five thousand, which is being recommended. And then, at the bottom, you'll see a pedestrian refuge. There's one of them here, we can decide on the location later, but we do have one for next year and one for the following year. Total of fifty-seven thousand dollars in capital projects planned for next year minus Village Hall at a million, and we would just treat that as its own project.
Okay.
Where are the refuges, what is that, where is that, where are those located?
So, if you turn to the appropriate page in your.
It's, one's going to be on Joe Carr somewhere across from Marvin Creek, and then the other one was slated for Marvin Road to connect the end of Ennis Brook to Woodcliff.
Correct. And we can decide which location y'all want to do, and if you want to throw another one out there when we get to the point, just put the money in there for now, we'll go over the details of it.
It's a silly question, but what consists of a refuge? Pedestrian refuge? What are we looking at?
So, have you been, so if you go down Marvin School Road and you've got the Gates of Ainsley kind of the path and then the Marvin Creek.
Okay, so it's just a crossing.
It's a cross, but there's like a little concrete middle.
That makes sense, okay. I just wanted to get my head clear on, what are we, what are we doing here?
It's just a safe place for people to cross the street and, and make it a little bit easier and make it more visible that this is, this is, people are crossing the road here.
Now, with the pedestrian refuge that you're talking about with Ennis Brook and Woodcliff, what side would it be on?
It's in the middle. Oh.
No, I mean, on what side, Ennis Brook side or Woodcliff side?
No, refuge is in the middle.
It crosses over from one neighborhood to the other. If you go down, like she said, go down Marvin School Road, there's a, an area that they created, it's almost like a median that they put right in the center of the road.
Oh, okay.
And then, there's a walking path where it's a clear, you've got a good line of sight on both sides, and it's an area that technically, in certain states, if you have a crosswalk, you are required to stop. In North Carolina, I don't think that's the law, but it basically identifies, there's usually some signage involved.
Signage, you've got more paint on the street.
Okay.
So, it's, it's connecting one neighborhood to the other.
Now, I don't think that we need to have that one, it, that spot until we have some connectivity. But, so I definitely think the one on Joe Carr, maybe we even do two on Joe Carr, kind of depending, because I know that Canterfield and Marvin Creek.
I would imagine a lot of kids are crossing that road at both locations up by Canterfield or north of that, or, I'm sorry if I'm getting my directions wrong, but, but also where the first inlet is, safe crossing pass, because kids are probably riding their bikes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just asking, because I, I know that, and I've mentioned this before, Woodcliff made a paved.
Right, so it would be right there and then at the end of Ennis Brook, kind of between Ennis Brook and the lot to the north.
And by default, those, putting those in slows traffic down.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, you can't go barreling through it, or you can, but it's.
But then sidewalks would go on the other side, you think, maybe?
Sidewalks would be in front of Ennis Brook is where Park, Second Greenway have it slated. But, again, I've said it before, I don't think that there's a point to putting a sidewalk, it goes nowhere, but, you know.
For Ennis Brook?
Yeah.
It goes to somewhere.
Just in front of the neighborhood.
Well, it connects to Firethorn.
No, it doesn't. Where does it connect?
It would if you put a path in front of that, you're saying the other way?
The other way, yeah, because you've got that house there that doesn't want anything in front of it to connect to the preserve.
Well, maybe just a, if the preserve wants, doesn't want to connect, we'd have to figure out what the easement's in the models.
Yeah, we could get an easement, everyone has a price.
The easement's going to happen.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, because people talk to the homeowner and he doesn't want to do anything, so.
So, if you flip over your page, on the total page, I did add a section for road resurfacing plan as requested by Cantor. I haven't put numbers in there yet, because we really need to figure out how we're going to do that in terms of the plan. So, but it is earmarked in there, we will have that in next year, so that, those numbers will be out late a little bit cleaner. And that's a separate fund, so it's, it's really not, it doesn't have to be in the CIP. The total, again, like I said, was one million fifty-seven dollars for next year, a million of that being Village Hall. We could go through the detail of the subsequent years, but again, we will go over these in more detail at the budget retreat for that given year. So, what we would be doing by approving this in concept, again, it's not a binding document, it's just taking that million fifty-seven, that, that one million and fifty-seven thousand, putting it into the budget for next year. Again, minus a million, because I've already mentioned that that was in a capital project. So, the fifty-seven million, or fifty-seven thousand is in the budget already for next year. This would be the second year that we fully funded our CIP one hundred percent. And then, we can have discussions about subsequent years later, if y'all want to talk about those now.
The only thing that I, the only thing that I want to bring up is that you guys did talk to Tollmore about the parking lot, and they are more than happy to take that back over, so that we do not have to maintain it, we don't have to do anything.
We are, and I was going to mention that in my.
So, would you, do we see them getting rid of that parking lot?
Uh, it's kind of what they're thinking.
Okay, so, we just need to make it crystal clear what happens when they do that.
Yes.
Okay, so, parking then goes on the street in front of those homeowners, and make sure those homeowners are aware that that's what's going to happen, because that, by default, they're either going to park at the other neighborhood or, you know.
I think they can deal with that problem, but also, we need to make sure that we have access to the trail, so that we can get in there and do maintenance when maybe.
So, what, and we can.
That's another thing, understanding that the people that are going to be working there are going to be parking there and then accessing that trail to go do the work.
That's fine, and again, this was, this is super like preliminary, like we just, we just talked to Tollmore about it, but, again, that, that gets, that gets that off of our list of stuff that we have to maintain, when that's forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars right there.
So, we will take that off, I was going to mention the Tollmore in my admin report, so we'll go into more detail, but I'll go ahead and take that off for subsequent years, so y'all won't see it on there. And when we get, you know, when we go to talk to our financial analyst, if they're later deciding to be hired within the agenda, they won't see those numbers.
My, my expectation is we will also hear from the other, the neighborhood across the street when the people start parking there and, and there next to their pools to access that field, so.
So, this will be on the consent agenda for next meeting, unless there's any questions or concerns about it. Again, I'm going to reiterate that it's not binding, it's just used for playing purposes. I do want to mention that we do have a greenway and trails CIP that we discussed at the budget retreat. This is something that you guys will discuss with your parks and recreation, greenway joint session. So, there will be another one that you see of these, but it's only related to what trails and greenways and which order they're, they're to be implemented.
So, do you need us to make a motion to put this on the consent agenda?
You, you can, I'm just going to put it on there unless there's any problems, I don't necessarily need a motion.
Okay.
No, I don't need a motion.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Moving forward, next discussion and of road resurfacing policy.
So, attached in your agenda packet is the road resurfacing policy that we have worked up with the comments made at the last meeting with AMT. In conjunction with our attorney and our engineers. There's a couple of pieces of language in here that I forgot to take out, that I will do before, it's in the consent agenda where it says, Mike, insert language here. But, for the most part, not for the most part, this is the policy that we're recommending. As you can see, the track changes kind of highlights some of the major changes. And we discussed all of these at the last meeting with the exception of, let's see, the first paragraph, and it's down to where it says ninety percent, we see a cross out of eighty percent. We changed that percentage, and then that last asterisk mark where we reserved the right to, we had that cross out and we, we added that language in.
Chaplin was good with all these changes?
Yes, I do want to make note, because y'all, y'all had, y'all had requested that it be inserted just as it was before. Chaplin and Mike had a major discussion about if we tell them to bring the roads up to standards, then, then we expect, they have the expectations that we will accept them if they bring them up. So, Chaplin decided to add that language at the end. If the owner refuses to make the repairs, then we refuse to accept those.
We refuse the streets.
If they make the repairs, then we will accept it. And, other than that, there was one section on the back in terms of performance bond. You see that capital language where it says Walden, turn, insert language about notification?
Yep.
I've been removed that before, so that's, that's not going to be in there.
And then, a number seven where it says Walden, insert here.
Yeah.
Where was the one before that?
Number five, maybe number five at the.
At the bottom, it's bold, all red or capitalized.
So, we'll take that out, but the lift number six was the performance bond, that was language that was changed by the attorney and the engineer. And that should encompass all the changes that were made from, from the last time y'all saw this.
Any questions from council, from boards? All right, next up on the agenda is.
Figures without consent?
Correct.
Discussion of engineering standards and procedures manual.
So, this is a pretty lengthy document. I'm not sure why the track changes didn't, I, I, this was a document that Mike created, and I wasn't here when this happened. So, I want to note the changes that were made in the document that we currently have today and what's being proposed to you now, so that you can see those differences. Turn to page four. J, letter J. You see the ninety percent? Again, as reflective as you just saw, it was eighty percent, we changed it to ninety percent.
Okay.
Okay.
Number three in J, it used to be thirty days, or it is currently right now thirty days, we changed it to ninety days. And this was basically to give them more time to cha, to make the necessary changes in their punch list if needed. And this was all Mike, this was all recommended by Mike.
So, we gave them more time to fix stuff instead of less?
Yeah, and this was in relation to the, the final inspection of the streets when, when we got to the point of turning them over, we felt like they needed one more time on streets. When, when we came back and said, you've got to make these changes, and they had to hire someone out. So, we thought thirty days was a little unrealistic for them to mobilize a street vendor to make the repairs. So, we did give them one more time to make those repairs. If y'all want to keep it thirty, I can have that conversation with Mike and we can.
What if we, what if we meet in the middle and say sixty?
Okay.
I feel like ninety's just, and then we've got people calling, be like, why aren't those cars fixed? And about sixty? What do you guys think?
I agree.
Okay.
I think thirty's too short, I think ninety's just let stuff just dangle out there.
So, if we could meet in the middle at sixty and Mike doesn't have any issues with that, I'll put it on the consent agenda. If he doesn't feel comfortable with that, I'll, I'll put it on just a regular item, so I can.
He suggested the ninety?
He did, yes. If you turn to page ten, so all the pages that I'm not going over, there's no changes being proposed. Number, well, roadways, the very bottom, number two, the ninety there, it was eighty again. A collection of the same changes that you just heard. And then, if you turn to the very last page of the document.
Like, the very, like, very last page?
The very, very last, after all the typical sections and detail sections.
What page?
The very last.
It's going to be number, sheet number seven twenty-one point one, yes.
If you recall, if you recall, maybe a year and a half ago, we had issues with, I think it's Canterfield, in terms of the depth, the change of the curb and gutter from the street was a little bit of a variation. Cancel at the time decided to add this into their spec manual to make sure that that never happened again. So, it, it is, a two-inch variation is allowed by DOT, but we wanted to have a little bit of higher standards, so we, we added this in here. So, you'll also see, that, that's called a longitudinal joint. And then, you'll also see the, the detail of the manhole cover, so that, that was defined. This was added in, so this, we currently do not have this in place, this was added in per cancel, for the previous cancel. We're just now getting to the point of amending it, so that's, that's what that is. And that is it, those are the only changes.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
When do we get to put these on road signs up?
That is, that's a conversation that Rohit and I need to make sure we have, but that is something that we need to start adding into our new developments. And we can, we can check the pricing of those signs and see if we can go ahead and do some of ours that we have the roads on. We wouldn't have to pay for any of the roads that we currently own today if we want to go ahead and start making those changes. And then, moving forward, future developments would adhere to these standards.
I mean, I, I, these are super cute. I mean, I love these, I think these are great. Like, I think we should, I mean, as many as we can get, you know, that we've already taken the roads over and we've already accepted them into Marvin, like, I absolutely think we should do that. And I also think that we might maybe possibly could check with DOT to see if we could do like Marvin School Road, Marvin Road, Newtown Road, like, when they're in Marvin, we can change those, too.
And just, just, just as I'm thinking about this, and I go back to the days of when we changed our signs in Firethorn, we did that as an HOA on our own.
We did it, too.
And stuff, but the existing signs? I mean, I would say, let's offer the existing signs to the HOAs and they can do their own thing with what they want. Because some families, sometimes people like that as deco, art deco in their homes, and they can do their own way of getting rid of it and stuff. Otherwise, it becomes a, we got to get this one off. I, I think it's just a nice gesture to, you offer the.
I know what you're talking about.
You offer the existing signs to the HOA to do what they want with them.
Oh, right.
You know, like, there may be some people interested in.
Sure, putting, you know, Firethorn.
Maybe generating some funds from them and stuff, so. I knew I took a sign.
So, Phyllis took a fundraiser idea.
I have a.
Village Hall fundraiser idea.
There it is, yeah.
But, yeah, we, but we need to, we need to start converting.
So, the manhole thing is, will be inserted for, before we take everything over and stuff, this is all going to be fixed next, that's the big issue that's left in.
Yeah, and I do want to make a note in, in these differences, these are our spec standards, so like, any developer that comes in today has to adhere to these. When, when we enter an agreement with DOT in terms of their resurfacing plan, we have to go to their standards. So, they, their standards may be slightly different from ours, because they, they left their contract based on.
Their standards, not ours.
And, and not just serving Marvin, but serving all the other areas that they may have, and so they, they can't have different standards for different areas, because that's not how their contract is left. So, we do ask them in the contract to put that they must adhere to our standards, and we try to negotiate that, negotiate that with them, so when they're in their pre-conference meeting, construction, they go over that with the vendor, so they know. But it's not contractually, it's not something that we have with DOT. So, just so we're clear on that. So, if we, we see these issues again in subsequent resurfacing plans, we have tried to address them, we don't have a lot of leeway in, in contract discussions with DOT in for resurfacing. But hopefully, we won't have that problem again.
Okay, so, you, you brought up a point about the signs, so what's, what's kind of, is there an action item to that? Is there a discussion around that?
I will check the pricing on signs, and then we can go out and actually count how many we have that we would need to, we would need to change, and I can get some numbers. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that's something we can use power bill funds for.
I was going to say, hopefully, we can use the funds from power bill to, as we take over roads, that becomes part of the road.
Again, just always know, when, from, from my standpoint, when I, when I see this, I'm always thinking of how do we entice, how do we close the donut hole? And what makes it look, I mean, the, everything that we can possibly do to close that donut hole, to people go, God, that's really nice, ah, that's really nice. Well, I'm sorry, you know what, you're not part of Marvin.
If you want really fancy signs, you can have it.
If you want really fancy signs, you can come on in. It, it's just the little things that, that trip people to go, you know, well, we should, we should have that conversation about joining the, joining the village. The patrol.
We'll let you keep your gate.
Yeah, we'll let you keep your gate.
Yeah.
You just take over the road and we'll change the signs for you.
Yeah.
I do think that that does need to be on the agenda coming up soon, like in a work session, about how, what, what our plan is to start closing up these donut holes and start coming to some of these HOAs and.
I think we start planning or reaching out to the HOAs, like, when's your next meeting, let's come and talk to you.
I, I think that has to be a priority, really.
Yeah.
Because if not, it just slides back. I think we've done a great job so far in the short time that we've been here, that we've, we've stayed on track, but we need to just continue to keep our foot on the gas on all the things that are somewhat a, a priority, including that donut hole's one of them. I mean, to get, go, you know, be at every one of those meetings, divvy them out, and to just say, hey, listen, we want you, we, what can we do to entice you to come in? What can we, where you have that special meeting within your HOA to, to, to be a part of, because we want to do it.
Derek and I had this conversation yesterday, because, you know, I had the conversation with him about some events, and, you know, most municipalities close their donut holes based on what their services are, what do you offer to the community? We're primarily planning and zoning and parks and rec. So, you know, we, we had the conversation of events, and we have all these events that we open up to the public, is there a point where we start looking at exclusive events just for Marvin residents? So, you know, that's a conversation, we'll, we'll add voluntary annexation plan to, to your, your next work session, and, and just come to the table with ideas in which you have to.
I actually drafted a letter years ago when we, we had talked about this, to kind of create like, what, what are the benefits back then? Why, why you would want to close that, be a part of it rather than, you know, and there, there was a list of things, there are some people, the NAIC, there's, you know, why, why pay a tax? Why, why, you get the benefits anyways, and representation without taxation, well, is, is that really helping the community? Because what could we do with, you know, and what we lose that goes to county? Little things like vehicles that they own and stuff, little bit of the piece of that, so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, whatever, which one is what changed this one?
So, are you guys good with the engineering standards and procedures manual?
Again, I'll, I'll make that note on that sixty days and add it to the consent agenda, if that's okay. If not, then I'll just add it as a regular work session item, or regular item of discussion.
So, next up, we have discussion in council, referendum and additional seat. So.
I, I don't have, this was something that y'all wanted to add to the agenda in terms of what do you want to do about the cancel seat and the additional seat that the referendum provided? Trying to pull up the ordinance right now, uh, we'll get the charter, check the charter. Okay. Okay, it would be here, and it would be in. So, I did that slide in. Adopted. So, we did have the referendum at the last elections where the public decided that they wanted to see an additional seat. And then the ordinance said that we would, um, make the additional seat contingent upon the approval of the, the referendum. So there, now that we've had this, um, it's, it's really up to you all to decide when you wanna add the seat and, and the manner in which you want to do so.
Now, do we have to?
Um, the, the ordinance shall be effective upon the first organizational meeting. So my interpretation is, you, you ask the public to, to provide their input. I, I don't necessarily think that you have to, um, but you did let them know that that would, that seat would be vacant upon that referendum. So we would, we actually made this ordinance change to, to change, or made this ordinance to change.
They can rescind the ordinance if they should choose. You can rescind it if you, if you should choose.
That's really a legal question, I do have to ask Chaplin.
Cause, I mean, cause the way that I, the way that I thought that it was going to be written was that we wanna see what the public wants, and if the public wants it, then we're gonna come back and decide whether we wanna do it and then when we do it. And I think, and I think this council that is present, um, talked and decided that instead of adding the additional seat at the next election and then, and then another one, um, to try to quell the, you know, voting situation to then kinda go to the next item of discussion that's on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and I'll ask Chaplin, I, I mean, the way this, this reads and the way that I'm interpreting it is you have a vacancy at the referendum, so it's up to you all to decide when and how that vacancy is filled. At, at the very latest, I would think the vacancy needs to be filled at the next election.
Right.
So at the very latest, that's what I would interpret this to be.
Now, the only, the only thing, cause I mean, we had talked about just kind of putting that on hold, if I'm correct, that kind of, put that on hold and then work on the next, um, sorry, the next item that's on the agenda. But, but my question still then, it goes back to, like, if somebody, if we don't have somebody showing up and we've got, you know, I'm out and Jamie's out, then we still only have two people. Like, it's still, you know, it's still a small council and it's, it's detrimental if we've got, you know, somebody not showing up and then, you know, two people are sick or one person's sick and then we can't make any financial decisions.
Right now, we're operating under the situation where if one of you are gone, not me, if one of you are gone, nothing financial gets known.
Correct.
Just because we have one officer that's not even showing up, okay? So that being said,
Which we are addressing, but still.
But in the end, adding another one not only adds cost to this, and in the end, at the very end, if you have a two-two and a four-man council two-two, allowing the mayor to vote creates that third vote and eliminates having to bring in another officer. And the, the voting issue where you can tie up a, basically, for four years, you can tie up a, um, decision-making process rather than change the direction of a town every two years, which is what we operate against.
And again, I'm fine, I'm fine with kind of sitting still until we get some of this other stuff straightened out and figuring out, you know, where we wanna go with this. And we've got time to do it if we, if we wanna do something. And if we don't, then maybe we do need to rescind the ordinance.
Well, y'all are, y'all are having some discussions about charter change in general.
Correct.
So we could, I mean, we, y'all adopted this ordinance to say if you're changing the charter, we can always scratch some of this back out and rescind this ordinance if that's what you choose to do. Or we can kinda put this on hold and at the latest, at the very next election, this, this would be on the, the ballot as far as the, the new person.
So, we don't know, based on how it was written to the community when they voted on it, we're not clear on, is it required that we do that if it was voted in favor? Or were we just asking, would the community be open to adding another seat?
That's what I thought we were asking.
We, we, that's what we were asking. I can pull the referendum language up if you wanna see it, but the way the ordinance was written is that it was this, upon the seat, the additional seat would be contingent upon the approval of the vote. So if the, the public vote was yes, then the additional seat would be there.
So then that means that you don't, you don't have an option, we don't have any, yours, that's a,
That's how I would interpret it, yes.
Okay, okay.
But then we can always rescind.
But you can always rescind that and make it an option for you.
Okay. Well, that's gonna be up for existing council to determine if that's the thing.
Just, just talk to Chaplin about it, I think that's just kind of on hold for right now, so I don't, I think we've got other, other things that we can do to, to fix, okay, this issue.
So, and we never really got, when it comes to the change of, um, our charter, we never really had a pros and cons list created for us is like, cause I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know what I don't know because I've never, I've always been a mayor council, right? And it's never been council, council manager, so.
Yeah, we had, we had asked for a, yeah.
We had asked for pros and cons, just so you guys get their clear, what you're, we're walking, what are we relinquishing, if you will?
Mm-hmm.
And on time with a lot of it, because a lot of it is personnel, which should be, in my view, and we've always talked about that, not five bosses, but one boss that deals with,
But let's, I mean, that, that does maybe,
We can, and we can, we can try to gather up something from what's provided in the literature from school of government, league of municipalities. But in a nutshell, the main difference, a lot of smaller places will start off as a mayor council form of government, strong mayor, however you wanna call it. Um, just because there's not so many services you have to offer and so many, you know, citizens that you have to serve. But as they grow bigger in terms of population and employee base, they usually will change over to a manager council form of government.
And, and when they do that, do they typically allow, in that circumstances, mayor has the voting right?
Um, we did pass out some, some literature that we gathered from,
It should, looks like out of the three hundred and forty-five towns, six percent, um, allow the mayor to vote, regardless of whether it's a mayor council or a council manager, I just did some quick numbers on that. Um, so, like we say, you wanna be, wanna be different and successful, you gotta be the five percent, right?
Listen, I, I was, I was for it last time because I do think it makes sense. Listen, if everybody is at the meeting, then, and it's a split vote, then you're gonna have to vote anyway.
Anyway.
And if you're, if you're, if not everybody's there and three people are in agreement, then your vote doesn't really matter anyway.
Doesn't.
The only thing that it does, and it's, is it stops something detrimental happening to the village. If, if somebody, if two people are gone, one person's gone and you've got,
You've had, you had a two-two issue the whole time.
The whole time, then they take advantage of an absence, then,
Throw something on the agenda.
Stop it. It doesn't, it doesn't, you, you can't,
And if the mayor's on their side, you're, you're screwed anyways and a two-two vote. So it ends up being, and you get to understand what that mayor's for. So it's important that when that mayor's running, what are his views? Cause at the end, I can say nothing and you guys are gonna decide.
I just wanna run the meetings and cut the ribbons and kiss the babies and shake the hands.
Shake the babies.
I, I, I was for it before when we talked about it, I'm still for it, because I don't, I don't think it matters who the mayor is. It has nothing to do with who the current mayor is, who the previous mayors were. It has to do with finding out what the mayor's thoughts are and then making sure that nothing detrimental happens when people are out.
And again, for the record, this was never my idea, this came from a former councilman, that it was the one that proposed it to us and it was moving forward and then all of a sudden he had flipped on his decision on that and decided to go back to no because there are a few people raised a little pain about, you know, having, and I, I see it as no,
I think he did.
It doesn't matter anyway, the, the, you know, but I, I just would like to know, going forward, when I'm no longer in this position and I'm voting for whoever to be mayor, I wanna know where they stand on issues. And that's important, we found out just recently.
I, I, I'm like him, I was for it before and still am now.
Okay.
Doodle on my end.
That's for the next time.
Okay.
But we'll, I'll try to get that, um, pros and cons list.
I mean, I,
We've been,
Just so we have a full eyes wide open, walking into what we're,
But I do, but I do think that we're going to put on the consent agenda to call for the public hearing?
For the charter change?
Yeah.
So that, that's the next item, um, um, this is, this item that you're on is just a discussion of this vacancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we moved on, I'm sorry, my, my apologies. Okay, so let's talk to Chaplin about this one and then just get us some information.
Clear that we don't necessarily have to go forward.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
Um, all right, next up, we have a discussion of RS dash two oh two oh dash two dash three, resolution of intent, permitting developers charter to change the form of government and allow the mayor to vote on all matters.
So at the recommendation of the board at the last meeting or one of many prior meetings, y'all had discussed changing the charter to allow the mayor to vote on all items and also to change the form of government. Um, again, this is just a discussion item, it's not, I'm not asking any action to be taken tonight or today. I do have the resolution of intent that's provided in your agenda packet, but it's just for you to look at and make sure you're okay with it and make sure no changes are needed. Um, this would be added to the next regular meeting for actual consideration, where you would take an adoption at that point in time. But it basically, um, states what's provided in the memo that's, that's there to you is that the mayor would be allowed to vote on all matters and the form of government will be changed from a cancel mayor form to a cancel manager form. Uh, we would then call for the public hearing to be held in, uh, March, March tenth at six thirty. So this would be a little bit of a lengthy process, um, and then that ordinance,
That's in two weeks.
That, that's where we would adopt the resolution and call for the public hearing. The public hearing would be held on April seventh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I said that right, but sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I, but yeah, it's fine.
So that, the process would, um, take a few more months, but that is the resolution, that's the intent that we understand the board to desire to take.
Okay. Good.
You're clear with that?
Look.
No, no questions?
No questions.
Next up is discussion of insurance deductibles.
So as you, um, we brought up this being at one of the previous meets, we are currently involved in a lawsuit and we have an insurance deductible that is associated with the coverage. Luckily, we are being covered from our insurance provider, but we do have a ten thousand dollar deductible for public officials liability. That, um, deck page is in your agenda packet and we did not budget for that ten thousand dollars. Um, they did bill us for about three or four hundred dollars, I was able to find some, some place to put that and, um, take it out of this year's budget. But I do want you to be aware that there will be ten thousand dollars floating out there at some point in time that we need to appropriate some funding because we did not budget for that. We do currently have forty-five thousand in our contingency and that's where I would propose to pull it from when the time comes. It could be this year, it could be next year.
And again, what does insurance cover these days? I mean, this is because, what's the difference of the thousand dollar versus ten thousand dollar deductible?
Uh, general liability is the thousand dollar deductible.
So that's for like an employee if they mess up or something and stuff. So if it's a council member that is accused of wrongdoing, that becomes ten thousand dollars.
Yes, and all the, the coverage limits and the deductibles are in, in your agenda packet, so you can see specifically what those, those are. The ten thousand is our highest deductible and that's for, uh, employee practice liability and public officials liability. Everything else is pretty substantial in terms of not a lot.
So, if that's the case, um, we have a ten thousand order, can we appeal to the, um, insurance company? Since we have officials that are now elected and went through a process of the, um, the Board of Elections had their own hearing and determined there was no wrongdoing. So the two individuals that are now public officials, why would we just add that to? Cause it's, we're defending the same, the same case, basically. It's just a number of different individuals that are named on it. Can we inquire about adding those two individuals on going forward?
We can definitely inquire with them, I'll send them an email. I would assume, um, that it's whenever the alleged actions took place and that's where they kind of timestamp it, but I will make that inquiry to see if,
And again, I, I, I guess, as we move forward and what that means to this community, if individuals decide to step up and run for office, they're liable up until the point that they get to office and then for whatever reason, somebody can file a frivolous lawsuit and go after them, which could cost them tens of thousands of dollars. How do we get an appeal to the public going forward to come and run for office if we can't say we have your back? And all we're doing, if you think about it, they're spending the same amount of money and we have a firm that is covering us. Ironically, the, the firm handling the individuals before they were council members brought them on before we even made our decision, it happens to be under the same, company, the same umbrella. Why couldn't we, um, just add that to it? Because it, it, it's essentially the same, because I, I think we need to make a clear message, especially, especially if we are somehow, you know, if these individuals are exonerated in, in any form, whether it's at the, it's, it's the, um, uh, Board of Elections or in a real court that basically says, hey, we have your back for this. And somehow, because I can tell you right now, there's nobody in their right mind in a small town, given what we have had to go through as a community because of just a few individuals filing frivolous lawsuits, that where does it stop? And then who, who do we end up really getting sitting at the table deciding decisions for towns? Because people are gonna be fearful, what is it gonna cost them if they were to just throw their hat in the ring? What could it potentially cost them? I'm, I'm just, and whether that's a state legislature's leaning or whatever, I just think that, given the fact that we're already paying for it and we had two individuals that were running for office that were essentially exonerated at the election level and they're now officials, why aren't we including them and why does it have to be on them individually? And, and I would, I would say if we ever had to vote on this, then let's, let's vote on it. But they, they wouldn't be able, the individuals in, in question here wouldn't be able to vote on it because that would be, I think it'd be two other council members voting on it and stuff. So I just think that that letter has to be drafted and have an understanding going forward if, if we're not covered because we're already paying you and let's just group these guys into it, we're already paying you. Why not, um, include them in it and why have a separate, why, why put it upon individuals who say, hey, I wanna make a difference in this village and, and they get sued for it, so.
We can, we can definitely make a general inquiry to our insurance provider if we have current public officials now that can be covered in our policy based on alleged actions that took place after, um, and I can definitely provide the answer to you.
I, I, I just think in, as far as, in, in, as if we have to go forward to make a, um, an ordinance change or, or whatever it is that we have to do, that, yeah, maybe they may have to take on that cost initially. But, because we can't say we're gonna defend you in an ordinance and they really did something wrong and they tried to run for office, yet they really, I don't think the village should be liable for it. But if they're somewhat exonerated and they can recoup that cost, if that, if, if, at the very least, recoup it. What I'm asking for right now is, we're already paying, we're paying, because of one individual, we're paying ten thousand dollar deductible because of a, in our, my view, a frivolous lawsuit. And he's included everybody that was involved in running and now that we've gotten direction from the Board of Elections that there was no wrongdoing, then why aren't we including them on something we are already paying for? Why put that on those individuals? Cause I can guarantee you, no individual in this town in their right mind going forward would run a run for council mayor or whatever seat unless you had some bad intentions in the beginning with you, you know? You're, you're that individual that, that likes that kind of intention.
I will send them, um, an email to the insurance provider and just have, you know, a quick question to them and I'll bring it back at the work session in March to give you the answer. And if y'all wanna further discuss any type of policy that you wanna put in place, we'll, we'll discuss about that.
I, I can tell you, this discussion's not gonna be much different when we're separate attorneys, we're, we're having the same discussion, why isn't Al lumped under, under one? We're not, we're not asking for favors or anything. This is, this is, in my view, frivolous, ridiculous, and the fact that, um, individuals are having to pay just because they said, I, I care about my community. Now I'm on the hook for whatever it is, you know, so. So do I have to, do we have to give you direction on that to inquire or do you just want?
I'll, I'll send an inquiry, just a, a basic question.
All right, anything else on that?
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, we have a discussion to hire a financial analyst, first try on for an analysis of major projects not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
The projects aren't gonna, not the projects to exceed ten thousand dollars, the contract to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Yes, correct, correct, yes.
What was that question, the what? What was that question? The what?
The projects are $10,000. It's the contract amount is $10,000. When he was reading that, I was like, wait a minute.
Well, that's what you're saying.
No, I know, but it's like, a major project's not to exceed $10,000. So it sounds like the projects wouldn't go over $10,000, but the contract would not go over $10,000.
Okay, yeah.
So, I'm reading something like this. We do have, so as we've discussed over the last couple of months, weeks, we have a CIP program where we have two, I don't know the number off the top of my head, it was roughly $2 million and something, over the next five years of projects that we have slated that need to get done or that are desired to get done. And we've, we obviously don't have $2.5 million that we're sitting on to provide, to fund these projects. So at some point in time, we want to talk about debt financing and other opportunities that we may have to secure funding to get some of these projects done, whether that means installment purchase financing, as we've discussed with Village Hall, whether that means a tax increase, whether that means an overlay district that's established. We don't know what opportunities are out there. So we wanted to bring someone in to kind of assess the current financial position and say, this is where you're at. If you don't want to do any installment finance purchasing, you want to do straight tax increase to cash fund things, this is what's going to cost you in year X, Y, and Z. So they can actually sit down and look at this as a wholesome estimate in terms of what our needs are and where we're at and figure out where we're going financially over the next seven years. I have experience with First Tryon from a different municipality that I've worked in. They do great work. They have a really great tool that is very interactive. You can turn projects on, turn projects off, so you can see those impacts. If you decide Village Hall is a major project you want to get done and then Village Center District is a major project you want to get done in year 2020, it tells you financially what you would have to assume as a tax increase to get those projects done as estimated. So it's a really good tool that they have. I did not reach out, just for full disclosure, I did not reach out to any other vendors just because I have experience with this group and I know their work. We could always RFP this if needed. I just know the level of caliber of what work they produce and I feel very confident they can do this job for us. The terms would be provided in their contract. We would also need to make sure we go over the scope of work that's provided as the attachment in our work order number one. It's the very last sheet before your next agenda packet. And those services are listed there as what they would be providing for us. They estimate somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 to do this work. We obviously did not budget for this. This would be something that we pulled from contingency where I just mentioned we have $45,000 that remains. If that insurance deductible is required in this fiscal year budget, you would have $25,000 remaining in contingency after both of these projects. Or both the insurance deductible and this project.
So what have we, I mean, done in the past on that? Because normally we allow, in your position, to deal with issues of $5,000 or less.
Yes.
And you're saying we're still going to give you that authority, but move it to $10,000? And then you would, with that, have a financial analyst to tap into? I'm trying to figure out what that's-
No, this has nothing to do-
The $10,000 had to do their fee, which is $5,000 to $10,000, which is on that page.
This has nothing to do with how much discretionary budget that we have given Christina.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, when you're, what, when are we, when are we utilizing them at what point? Because if it's only $5,000 to $10,000, how many projects are there at $5,000 to $10,000? Do we actually need a financial analyst?
No, they're looking at our CIP.
It's not, yeah, it's not, forget the projects. It's $5,000 to $10,000 to employ them. It's their fee.
Our projects are a million plus dollars.
Yeah, it's anything, whatever our projects are.
See, you read it wrong too.
Okay.
Our, the projects they will be looking at is straight from the CIP. What's listed in that CIP is what-
Amphitheater, Village Hall, downtown Florida.
So basically what we're, what she's asking is do, can we utilize them, should we utilize them, can we utilize them? To take care of, we utilize their tool because they have a tool that says for her, it simplifies it for her. She can say, she can pull up all of her projects, she could probably pull them all up for us and for the cost of $5,000 to $10,000.
To add an option-
Yeah, right, right.
If we want to, if we want to do trash, if we want to take trash everywhere, how much is that going to cost if we have to buy out a contract and then? How much, you know, what's the tax increase going to look like if we want to do trash? Like, there's like a billion different things that we can utilize this term for.
And we can add, like, stuff that's not identified in this CIP, like if y'all want to talk about other services, we can add that into their tool. And I actually have an example of it if y'all want to see it. It'll take me a second to pull it, but if y'all want to see how it works, it's actually-
I'm sure you're, you're comfortable with it, but it's up to the council, I mean, obviously, but the-
I, I think it's beneficial. Again, I'm going to go back to our, our, our planning meeting, our offsite planning meeting that, that says you, you're overutilized anyway and you'd be able to add a tool on to help you be more efficient. Because you're underutilized, I'm, I'm all for.
I just don't have, I just want to be clear and like, if we're talking about installment purchasing as far as like getting a loan for a pier or getting a loan for an amphitheater or whatever we're getting along for, I don't have the expertise to tell you guys over the course of 10 years, this is what we need to account for tax-wise. And I just want to be, you know, make sure that we have professionals that come in that know what they're talking about in terms of dollars and cents, how much that, how much impact that these topics can have.
I'm all aboard.
Yeah, I'm on board. Instead of pretending you're an expert, come on, nobody does that in our town. They've never done that.
We're all experts, we just like to-
So again, the scope of services defined on that very last page in the very first column. So if y'all have any questions or concerns with any of that stuff listed there, if you want to add or delete anything, let me know. This is pretty standard and straightforward to do.
You just make sure that everything that you think that we're going to need is on there. Because again, I think about, okay, the trash. If we want to take over trash, how much is it going to cost to buy out, you know, however many companies they are with however long it's going to be? What's the tax impact look like? Is it feasible for us to do? Like, that's, I mean, so stuff like that, like, just kind of-
How, how I envision the first initial scope of this is him and I will sit down and go over the different services, different projects. We'll add it into the, to the tool, present it to you all in a work session. This is going with it. If y'all feel like we need to add something or delete something, we can do that at that point in time. He actually has it integrated where you can turn the project on and off while you're sitting here live, so you can see that impact.
Perfect, and he would be able to come to the-
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
And, and, and let me just ask this, could you just, just brought up. If he turns a, if he has, let's say we have 10 projects going on. If he turns a project or two projects off, does it impact the other projects in the system?
It won't impact the other projects in terms of the dollars and cents they make. What it, what it looks at is any installment purchases that you have currently going on right now, which we have zero.
Right.
But let's say we sign a contract tomorrow for a $500,000 loan for Village Hall. What would be impacted is anything that's, let's just say it was a five-year installment purchase. And after five, year five, we decided we were going to do an amphitheater. It would impact the tax impact in terms of what you had assumed to be your installment loan payment on future years. So it wouldn't essentially affect that project in particular, but it would impact the layout, how it works. It's kind of hard to explain without actually seeing it. But it's got a lot of assumptions in there too, like they assume a growth rate. Based on, you know, what you've got left to develop, they assume any type of tax increase that you've already got planned, which we currently, you know, don't, but any of that stuff that's already in place, they, they do have a lot of assumptions in their tool. It's really cool. It's, it's a proprietary tool, tool that they use.
So no need to RFP it though?
Unless y'all want to RFP it, I mean-
I think, well, usually that's, you just get, even though you may favor this one because you've worked with them and stuff, but isn't, aren't we kind of required to do stuff like that?
Our financial policy says that, hang on, I'm going to read it to you. We did, I'm still learning it myself. Our financial policy does say that anything that's within that threshold requires an RFP. Let's see, formal quotes are required between $5,000 and $29,000. Now, this is not a statutory requirement unless it's construction or service. Our policy doesn't define construction or service in those thresholds. However, we do have another section that's in our financial policy that says professional services, which I would dub this as a professional service, do not have to go through that RFP process. So it doesn't specifically say financial analyst in there, but I would, I would dub them as a professional, which would exempt us to go through that requirement.
I would think it'd be the same thing as bringing on chaplain, you know, you're looking for an attorney, you don't-
Well, we did an RFP for chaplain.
Oh, we did? Oh, okay. But you're talking five, you're talking potentially $5,000 and we are RFPing for $5,000. For a professional service, I'm just-
We don't have to, we don't have to RFP, I mean, I can, I can send an email to a couple of different places saying, how much would you charge to do this? And see what they come back with.
I mean, I, me personally, I think if you like them and you've worked with them before and you know kind of what they, what the product is that they turn out, then I'm fine with that. Especially because I know we'd like to get this done before budgets.
I don't know the other, the other people's tools. I mean, I feel comfortable with them and know them. There's no relationship whatsoever in terms of disclosure. I just have worked with them in the past, just so y'all know. And they have done some work for the village in the past that I was brought to speed on when I talked to him. I think y'all had some conversation about bonds a few years ago and they actually came in and did some work for the village already.
Right, consider a bond for roads.
For roads, yeah, I remember that.
I'm satisfied that this is an appropriate solution as it stands.
Well, if there's a consensus, I'll make sure that just gets put on the consent agenda in the next meeting.
Do you have a consensus?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right, any other thing on that? Next up, we have discussion of 160D update and timeline.
All right, that's neat. So you all have probably heard by now, the state completely redid the statute that gives authority to municipalities to conduct planning and zoning. It's called Section 160D and it takes effect January 1st, 2021. But what we're going to talk about a little later in the agenda is that we have included in the RFP for our code reorganization to also have that firm make any changes that are needed to our code to be, you know, in, in compliance with the same, with the revisions that happen at the state level. Another part of the 160D update is that the state requires all municipalities to have a comprehensive plan. The due date for that is July 22, but we're going to work on that in conjunction with our land use plan because there are a lot of overlapping components of a land use plan and a comprehensive plan. What I'm, what we're also doing is we're working with COG and they're, they're doing this independently. We're not paying them for this, but they're doing a growth model for the whole area. And so we'll also include that in our comprehensive plan. They'll be done with that in June. So, and in the June-July period, we'll be presenting, the planning board will be presenting the land use plan and comprehensive plan to the council for adoption. And then when we have a comprehensive plan, that's when we have the, the go-ahead from the state that we can continue to enforce zoning.
So what was the reason for this? What was going on? Is there issues in communities or municipalities?
I think this was a joint effort between both developers and attorneys and municipalities that came to the state legislature to say, you know, hey, there are a lot of minor things that just aren't working right in the current, in the current establishment of this authority. And then they came up with quite a few things that they've changed. Most of it's the same, but I think the big thing is that they consolidated the authority. There were two separate sections for counties and municipalities. They consolidated that into one section.
I want to clean up just a couple of things. In layman's terms, basically, the only thing that y'all need to be aware of is there were some legislative changes. We're ahead of the game. We're taking care of it. There are some timelines that we have to adhere to. January 1st is where it's the start date of this statute, so we have to just be in compliance before then. So there's going to be some minor changes that y'all see throughout the next six months to eight months that basically are aligned with what these requirements are. I do want to make one correction that you had said, because you, you said the ordinance rewrite encompasses these. It does not encompass all of those. We have, you have requested some money in next year's budget for a consultant to help with some of these. So there may be some overlap in next year where we have a consultant that we hired to clean up anything that we don't get addressed in this.
And that was my concern of the, what we looked at years ago and put money towards it. And then it became a debacle because of, you know, the people, that we had an attorney doing it. He did it, but then it was challenged by some individuals. And it, we basically threw that out the window. So I know work has been done on this to clean it up.
So that that's been done is pretty much null and void at this moment in time because of these new standards that we have to adhere to. The whole purpose of, one of the subsequent items that you'll see is the ordinance rewrite or whatever we call it, is where we've RFP'd for someone to come in and clean up those things, kind of as you've mentioned. But also clean up where we've seen, this ordinance says 30 feet, this ordinance says 60 feet, but they're talking about the same thing. There's a lot of that in our ordinance and we want to kind of make them cohesive, clean them up. And that's what that subsequent item will be about. But we've also tried to incorporate some of the changes that are needed in this requirement as well. So we're trying to do two things and one fell swoop. We may miss some things, which is why we've got some money in next year's budget to have this 160D kind of cleaned up if, if we need to. Hopefully, we don't.
So we don't have to plan for budget money for the ordinance cleanup in this new year coming up, or do we?
I have, we have budgeted a small-
Twenty thousand budgeted.
Twenty thousand?
For the cleanup?
No, 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 no. We've got money budgeted for this year for the ordinance rewrite to mention, to, to go over the, the example that I said, the 30 feet and the 60 feet. That's for that purpose. But now that we, and that's what we intended to do last year when we approved the budget is, we had no idea this was coming down the line. But now that this has come down the line, we've tried to incorporate some language, some general language in that RFP that says, clean up our 30 and 60 feet items, but also let's clean up some of the requirements that are a part of this.
Okay.
So next year, we have $5,000?
Yes. Next year, we had a very small amount budgeted for 160D and if it's needed. Does that make sense?
And the comp plan, 160Ds, like-
Well, the comp plan is part of the-
You believe we're in good shape where we're at right now based on what we have in the pipeline and we're moving towards?
In terms of?
Is, is getting to this by January 1st. We're headed in the game, okay. Perfect. All right, any questions from the council?
Brooke and I did attend, just so y'all know, Brooke and I did attend a COG meeting to kind of go over the, the basics for what, what these changes are. So we were aware of it, just now.
So we're not asking them blindly to just fix it for us. We both know what the changes are. It's just that there are very many small changes, so we don't feel like we need to go over it at this meeting right now.
As you've taken on this role of planner, have you been noticing and highlighting things to the kind of, you know where, where to go to?
Absolutely.
Okay, because you're seeing the, you're seeing the, the 30 and 60 as you, as you come upon this stuff. So you're highlighting, so we can get right to it?
Right, right. I have a running list of those and I'll be giving those to the contractor, consultant.
Consultant. Do we have an attorney do that or?
We're going to talk about that in the future. It's number 14.
So next up, we have, oh, I'm sorry, did any of the comments from staff on that?
No.
The council's good? All right, next up, we have discussion revisions to allow tree plantings list in 92, Appendix A and B.
So in your packet here, there's both the memo and the actual tree planting list. I've been advised by both residents who have been planting trees and developers too and also by our urban forester from the county, Bill Smith, that both there are trees in the list that really shouldn't be and there are trees that should be in the list that aren't. And so I just wanted to bring that up to you to ask if I could get direction to consult with Bill Smith and have a revised allowable tree plantings list, which would be an ordinance text amendment because the list is in our ordinance as it says here, Chapter 93, Appendix A and B.
Some that are native and allowable or not in our-
Right.
Sure, you can.
Oh, is it cost on that? Do you have any?
It won't cost us anything. We, we already, yeah, we, we pay a yearly fee to have Bill do all sorts of tree-related work for us. So this is not a- So this is not an additional cost.
Any other questions, comments from staff on that?
Mr. Mayor, I know you, you had, I think, wanted to look at some of the trees as well, so I don't know if you have any particular comments that you wanted to mention.
On trees?
Yeah.
Seriously?
I, did you, did you have a comment?
On a tree?
I thought it was you.
He was getting ready to move on and stop and stop talking and talk about it.
Well, no, but I, I just, I, I know when we, we had to take down the big one in Fire Door and what we were gonna replace it with, and I, well, I don't know. I don't think it was me.
Okay, well, sorry.
Seriously.
So now you have Kim on, you know, she says, yes. She's watching you now. All right. Next up, our discussion of resident survey results.
Great. Take one, pass it down.
Right.
I'm gonna take a couple of these and pass it down. Well, no, this is great. I've been looking forward to this discussion for a very long time.
It's October thirtieth?
Yeah. And here is the, the report that COG prepared for you guys to look at. And they go through every question and show you the breakdown of, of the answer choices. So, I mean, just to recap for a minute, the purpose of the survey was to gather the residents' opinions on various things that were deliberated by the council and the planning board, and see how policies and capital projects, et cetera, would be impacted going forward, next year, next five years, based on the residents'.
And how many took the survey, three hundred?
Uh, yeah, three hundred and thirty-three was the response rate, where the, it was sent out to eighteen hundred-something households, eighteen hundred and twelve. It's on page six. Well, page five. There, I, I put, the PowerPoint was huge, so I put two on a page. So it's like the third sheet of paper, but it's numbered page five. That's where it says eighteen hundred households, thirty-three, three hundred and thirty-three took the survey. So in, in survey-taking, planning generally, they, they shoot for one-sixth response rate. They say if you get that much, that's plenty enough to assume that this is a balanced response rate for the whole population. And the response rate was around eighteen percent. One-sixth is about sixteen percent. So they did get more than they were, they, they got a higher response rate then, what they expected, so that's good.
Pretty good, eighteen percent. There's a lot of information in here, so I don't know how much time we want to dedicate.
Yeah, I mean, we did get it received late, I agree.
I, I would, I would love to be able to just really kind of digest the information that's in here, as opposed to doing...
Could you hit, hit our five biggest takeaways?
Yeah, yeah, I can do the five biggest takeaways, for sure. I thought that majority-wanted Village Center was interesting, fifty-four percent. Yes, that was interesting, too. Majority, seventy-five percent, did not want to see any commercial development outside of the Village Center District.
So that may lead to the gentleman earlier that, you know, clearly said, hey, it's not what we're about. You know, we have, I think, one right now listed that's, that's in the process, Marvin Gardens. And that may be our only one, especially if you've got seventy-five percent.
Right, outside of the Village Center. Marvin residents thought that walkability and open space was very important. Seventy-seven percent said that open space recreation, they want more in Marvin. And seventy-four percent said that walkability was very important. Specifically, they, they thought that connectivity between neighborhoods was the most important factor of walkability. All three proposed tax increases were supported by majority. Fifty-two percent supported trash pickup. Sixty-eight percent supported increased law enforcement. And fifty-three percent supported...
How much on law enforcement?
Sixty-eight percent.
Okay, and what else?
And fifty-three percent supported traffic control officers increase. I think I hit everything there that I was interested in.
So then that would lead to your person looking at this, saying, okay, we're gonna go through these three things. Trash, law enforcement, and traffic control. They're gonna say, okay, it's gonna cost, it should, it, it means a three-cent tax hike, whatever.
For, definitely for trash, we could add law enforcement increases in there and, and just know how that affects budgets moving forward, so, yeah, we could definitely add those.
And I just, just for the record, the trash tax increase would replace your current bill for your private trash pickup. So just because your taxes are increasing doesn't mean that you, you have a net similar, you know, amount that you pay every year, basically.
But, but there's a sunk cost in that down the road because we have to pay the difference.
Right.
We have to, we have to give the, the notification fee.
Right, and the six months of service, but we'll incorporate that in the tax rate.
And then did you get the last one, traffic calming?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was the most supported capital project, at eighty-seven percent.
Did we define traffic calming? I mean, is it basically roundabouts?
Well, it can, it is, roundabouts are included, but it can include all sorts of things from pedestrian refuges, signage, yeah, speed tables or curb bumpouts, anything that would help reduce speeds or increase pedestrian safety, basically.
Because I, I mean, right away, I think of, obviously, the, the roundabout would need to be completed, but also, we've already put in the budget for two of the refuges.
The CIP.
Yes, and then the other issues are where we have, tend to have accidents, whether it's Bonds Grove or Joe Curran Marvin. And we've always talked about slowing down Marvin traffic.
Yeah, that would be included under traffic calming.
The comments on them, on, at the end of this is pretty enlightening.
I thought so, too.
I mean, it's very interesting.
Entertaining.
Yeah, and it comes part and parcel with some of the responses that you were talking about. Like, you know, everybody is, I'm, I'm bouncing through here, but the feeling of commercial is like, nobody's interested in commercial. And then you see stuff like, you know, reduce government. They like the way the government is, it's reduced. Some even ask about, what are we talking about for Village Hall? Why do we need that? It's, it is interesting to look at this. But most people are talking about traffic. I mean, here's three in a, three in a row. Traffic calming should be a top priority. Traffic is increasing around here, and the biggest concern with traffic, you have less happy people overall, more stress, not the way I want to live. And then right underneath that, as traffic is another one problem. And it's very interesting.
But I think, but I think some of the things that are already in play to take care of that, I mean, when you get a roundabout down here, and with, you know, some of these things, when they, when they start to come in, they will start to, they will start to ease that congestion, but, you know, disgruntled, you know, people getting caught up in traffic.
That'll make a huge difference once that, when it was needed first.
That's, that's a, yeah, that, that's a huge one. And, you know, because, I mean, look, look at the relief that's been given right here. I mean, we don't, you don't, that's a non-issue, non, that's non-discussion. So, you know, put yourself forward, two years from now, three years from now, whatever the case may be, when, when you've got a roundabout there, I don't know what's going on with Joe Curran and Marvin. But, you know, when you start to ease some of these things, you know, you have the opportunity to, to enhance other things.
They're talking about wanting turn lanes there at Joe Curran Marvin. Not a roundabout.
A what?
A turn lane, just a, yeah.
Yeah.
Talk about that, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have not had the time, quite frankly, to look at the comments, but I'm anxious to look at those.
Oh, please leave them there thoroughly, maybe.
Do y'all, do y'all want to have this?
Tell who's writing them?
Do y'all want to have this at another work session where y'all go over it detail, or is this, this coming up for you guys?
I'm good. I mean, I, I mean, I've seen it multiple times.
I, I, this was to help us get direction.
Yeah.
I think.
Which I think we're in that right direction.
Which I encourage all of us to then make sure we, make sure we're people. You understand where people are percentage-wise, which this does a good job of it. And then, you know, the comments are the comments, I mean...
I mean, this is a reminder of, well, this is a reminder of why we're here.
Right.
I mean, so we sit here and go, gosh, we don't know what to do today. Well, here's what we're gonna work on.
Here you go.
No, I think the, having the five biggest takeaways was good. Brooke, that was super helpful.
Yep.
Okay.
Did, did food just walk in the door?
Yes.
So can we take a quick recess?
I would.
Make a motion.
What time do you have?
Two. Two.
We should be okay. All right, quick motion for, quick recess?
Go grab food.